Your operations, none submitted. Finance budget report. Administration will update the board on the budget. This item provides an opportunity for the board's information and discussion.
Welcome.
Good evening, Vice President Rhodey, Superintendent Thompson, members of the board. So I'm pleased to give the board tonight an update on our budget development process. Certainly on an evening like tonight where we recognize the efforts of our teachers and we see the efforts of our teachers and our administration in our student success, certainly our counselors, our college and career coordinators, our coaches, the Avid program. It's a good reminder of how important this budget process is and to be quite frank, how difficult it is when resources are X and our needs are Y and we have to make difficult budgeting choices in order to reflect what the board and the district deem as a priority, but try to meet the needs of all these different populations. So it just kind of struck me tonight listening to some of the presentations to the board and the recognition just how challenging this job is sometimes to get these resources into the right places. So that's a good segue into the first slide that I have for you tonight, and you've seen this slide before, but it is a reminder that we do purposely target our funds to directly support our students. This 87.2% of our operating budget you've seen before, and the operating budget excludes our debt service and our capital improvement expenditures. That leaves about $660 million that comprises our operating budget, and 87.2% of that is in direct support of students with the biggest chunk of that being direct instruction. So this is an important graphic to always keep in the forefront in that all of our work is certainly in the support of our students and their efforts to dream, believe, and achieve, but when we are faced with criticism, if you will, that we're not spending enough in the classroom, this is the chart that we go to to say, yes, we're spending 87.2% of our operating budget in direct support of the classroom. Also, a good reminder is that almost two-thirds of our budget is restricted, and by restricted we mean that either by statute or by federal program, there are limitations on how we can spend the funds. And some examples of what is restricted funds for our district would include special education, nutrition services, bond and interest, capital outlay, at-risk, pre-K at-risk. So these funds have to be spent either specifically for a program or they have specific guidelines that restrict where the funds can be spent. That leaves really only one-third of our budget that has flexibility to be spent on general K-12 expenditures. So that's just an important distinction to remember as we're planning the budget is that really two-thirds has rules and strings attached to it. Another important graph to kind of keep in mind, too, is that we are a people business. We spend almost three-quarters of our budget on salaries and benefits. Our staff certainly is our most important resource. It is an area where we focus a tremendous amount of budget and rightly so. The other 25% of the budget primarily, bond payments make up almost 7% of that, and then there's a variety of smaller pieces. So kind of the important takeaway here is we can spend time on looking at reducing expenditures, making choices within the budgeting process in utilities, transportation, supplies, but those really have relatively little impact because the majority of our budget is related to people. So let's talk a little bit about funding at the state level. So what I did was I took last year's chart and then I updated it for Senate Bill 16. So I did include 1819 funds at the all-school level across Kansas. Last year, $160 million was put into education. This year, with the addition of the $90 million in inflation for 1920, we're looking at close to a $200 million investment across the state. The following three years, we're looking at around $112 million, give or take, for '21 and '22, and then a little bit less than that for '23. This assumes that the funding that has been set in statute is fully funded. That obviously can change as we move from year to year. How does this impact Wichita? So we're looking at for fiscal year '20 revenue estimates, right now we're looking at around $18 million and change in the general fund and the weighted funds. So if you recall, our general fund budget is based on either the last year's enrollment or the prior, the second year, whichever is higher. So for us, we're looking at 1718 enrollment and 1819 enrollment to build the fiscal year '20 budget. Because our enrollment has been in a slight decline, we will be using the 1718 enrollment numbers. The weighting, the weighted funds, those figures are determined based on the current year, so it will be fiscal year '20 counts. So we're going to estimate those right now based on our fiscal year '19 counts. We think we'll actually have a slight decline in a few of those, a slight increase in others, so we'll probably end up about square, but those estimates are currently being worked. So right now, again, we're looking at about $18.2 million in general fund and in the weighted funds. We'll get about $725,000 in additional special ed. Again, that will be restricted to special ed spending. And then around $600,000 probably on the LOB, and that's because the artificial base of 4490 that's used to calculate the local option budget is actually due to increase based on a CPI factor. We don't know what that is yet, so I'm just estimating a $600,000 increase at this point. That brings us to estimated new funds, and again, we are definitely still in estimating territory, so these numbers could change. We're looking at around $19.6 million of new funds available. Where we are estimating our fixed costs, at least through the early part of May, we're looking at a utility increase of about $850,000. This is water, gas, and electricity, the normal rate increases that we see. Fuel, we don't anticipate to be looking too terribly bad at $200,000. The transportation increase is $700,000. That's based on our contracted scheduled increase. Property casualty, at least at this point, looks not too bad either at $250,000, and this is relative to our budget, obviously. It's all relative when we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. Technology at $500,000 increase. And then what we're looking at related to high-needs enrollment. So that's not necessarily a fixed cost, but it is a number where we are having some needs in certain areas, special ed, ELL. There's just a few areas we've had to come in and look at fairly quickly addressing some real needs, and we have put some money there. We'll talk a little bit more about it here in a few slides, but a lot of what we're covering in our high-needs enrollment, we have budget offsets, so it's not that that's coming, not necessarily out of new funding, but out of areas in the budget where we've been able to make some decisions and move funding around a little bit. So I wanted to kind of show you the trend that we're going to be looking at as we go through the next few years. Certainly, our focus right now is fiscal year '20, but this will take you out for the next four. The fiscal year '20 shows the almost $20 million we are anticipating receiving this year, and then so far, the fixed costs that we're estimating, and those numbers will obviously tweak here in the next month or two. But there's obviously a pretty good gap of availability to look at some of the budget needs that we have outside of the fixed costs. As you go into '21, '22, and '23, when we are still receiving new funds, we're looking at $11 to $12 million each one of those years. Fixed costs, a little bit higher in '21, that's the transportation contract, and then kind of back to a more normal increased level in those few years. You see the gap between revenues and our fixed costs obviously squeezes. That's assuming flat enrollment. If we have a continuing decline in enrollment, the gap between revenues and fixed costs will squeeze even tighter. When you get to '23, '24, that's when the formula changes to a CPI increase, and you can see there's a very narrow gap on that year. So this is just, as we start thinking through kind of our longer-term plans related to our strategic plan, this is kind of the funding matrix we're going to be looking at, and we need to keep that in mind as we're moving forward. Again, it's going to be about choices within our budgeting process. If we don't have enough new money, we're going to have to choose to spend in certain areas and choose not to spend in others. Certainly, it's worth having a quick conversation about perspective. Certainly, and we hear this a lot, that education's been given a tremendous amount of funding, and it has. We've received, or we will receive over the course of the three years, fiscal year '18, '19, and now '20, almost $66 million. That is a tremendous investment, and we certainly are very grateful for those funds. Taking a slightly different perspective on it, though, if you look at the funding cuts and shifts from fiscal year '10 to '17, and we've shared this number previously, we've either cut or shifted funds into capital in the amount of almost $98 million. So just that difference, we're still a little upside down in that we haven't made up ground on that $32 million. That doesn't account for any inflation, that's just flat, straight costs. And if you look at some of the cuts that we've had over those years, 328 positions cut, four years of frozen wages, the calendar change reduced professional development changes to our transportation, reduction in school and program budgets, health plan changes, and of course, those cost shifts to capital outlay, we've made some progress back on a few of those areas, but certainly not back to where we were. So again, it's just taking a slightly different perspective on the fact that, yes, we've received a lot of funds, and again, we're very grateful for that, but certainly, we were cut and had to shift around budget to cover those cuts in excess of what we've received back so far. Looking a little bit more into that cost shifting to capital outlay, and I believe I showed this chart back when we were looking at the TRIRIGA product for capital. 1415 was the year the rule changed, and we started to move expenditures that were not typically capital-related, primarily related to software, into capital outlay, and then you can really see the impact of the block grant years in '15 and '16 and '16 and '17 where we were getting, approaching close to half of capital being spent on non-capital-related expenditures. We've actually made some gains in the past two years, partially because assessed valuations have been going in a very positive direction, and then we've been able to do some tweaking of the budget along the way. So that's looking better and better. However, if you do, again, looking just at a slightly different perspective, we've talked a lot about our deferred maintenance number. We currently estimate deferred maintenance needs through fiscal year '19 to approach $100 million. So if you look at the impact of the year over year of cost shifting into capital, had we not had to do that at the cost of $55.5 million, our deferred maintenance might have only been $44.5 million. So again, still a lot of money, still a lot of deferred maintenance, but a little bit better than $100 million had we not had to shift costs into capital to help the budget in other areas. Certainly, there are tremendous, and this is my favorite graphic, a tremendous number of wants and a tremendous number of needs that our district has. They will consume the $19.6 million relatively rapidly. So what we talked about last board meeting related to our strategic plan goals and a lot of the work surrounding accountability, this is where that prioritization, the focus of our budget planning, will really come into play and help us guide the overall budget plan. We'll have to have this, which I'm very grateful to have, in order to focus the funds where they need to be focused in order to meet our goals. So you've seen the 18 budget investments, so I've just given them to you once again, so you have this nice packet all in your hands should you need it, the fiscal year '19 budget investments. So we've actually, even before the completion of the strategic plan, we were already in that process of focusing budget on those areas that were of importance, including, and most importantly, investment in staff, but certainly into some of the at-risk areas which needed some attention. So as we look at fiscal year '20, identified needs under the strategic plan, certainly with a focus on accountability, and we're looking not only at new money but on budget choices that we're trying to make through the budgeting process. Again, top of the list, invest in staff, recruitment and retention through compensation. The board's made that very clear, that that is a high priority. It is a high priority in the budgeting process. But we have moved forward on a few other areas, and primarily, we've moved forward through making budget offset choices. So new teachers in the secondary level, and a few rows down, you'll see some elementary behavior intervention teachers. We have, we are moving forward on hiring for those positions, and we're using some budget savings in other areas in order to accomplish that right now. So we're also looking at additional coaching support, particularly in ESOL and learning services. We are looking at a pre-K expansion. We're going to do an all-day pre-K pilot at two locations, Park, I believe, and Cleveland. And that's actually going to be funded through the pre-K grant. We are also continuing to expand our learning centers. We're adding two FTE that are going to be funded out of at-risk dollars. We are adding $80,000 into parent as teachers so we can maximize some additional grant opportunities. There were also around, I believe, close to 30 families that ended up on a waiting list because we couldn't serve their needs, so hopefully, this additional funding will allow us to meet the needs on that waiting list. As we get down into the aligning resources, and I believe Ms. Rhodey might have asked this question related to accountability at the last board meeting, but we will be looking at adding some additional support to assessments and research in order to support some of the additional accounting reporting requirements. I think it's going to have to be a must. We just aren't going to be able to meet all of the new needs that the state is going to develop, the reporting the state's going to develop that's on a per-school basis, that we're going to have to be accountable and get all that information pulled together. So that will be in the works. Certainly, we're going to be focusing a lot this year on professional development as we get into student, the reference-based grading, I'm sure I'm butchering that terminology, but it's one of those areas I know about, but I try to steer far, far away. And then there is some title realignment in order to make sure that our title funds are also meeting the needs of our strategic plan, and then we're, so we're working through some of those. But again, those are title funds, not necessarily new money. That's kind of where we've spent the bulk of our time trying to make some, at least gather information as we're putting the budget, some preliminary information together. To kind of walk through the tentative budget timeline, this week, Thursday, the Kansas Supreme Court takes action in the next Gannon decision. Oral arguments are set for 9:00 a.m. that morning. So we anticipate, no guarantee, but we anticipate a decision by mid-June, so hopefully, we will hear something, because we've been told KSD will not release the budget forms until that decision gets made. So certainly, from a selfish standpoint, the sooner we get a decision, the sooner we can cut loose on several budget initiatives that await the state budget forms. June 27, the board will approve final fiscal year '19 business. We hope, again, depending on if those forms are released in time, to have a first draft of the fiscal year '20 budget for you to formally review, with August 12 being the day that we'll schedule the public hearing, and August 26, hopefully, the public hearing and budget adoption process. So to recap tonight, the fiscal year '20 budget planning process continues to move forward. Again, under the Senate Bill 16 Finance Plan, we are assuming that that plan will be put into law even if the Supreme Court doesn't find the solution to be fully adequate. The district will be monitoring the Supreme Court actions, certainly the oral arguments and the decision as it comes down. Budget staff continue to refine fixed cost increases, and it is reviewing all the budget increase requests. The cutoff for budget increase request was just last week, so they're just now trying to sift through the fairly large stack of requests that have come in. Budget will be built around the strategic plan, keeping that accountability in mind, which is going to be very important for us in this next fiscal year, and certainly continuing to focus our expenditures in direct support of students. Going back to the first slide, that will continue to be a very important data point for us, that the majority of our funding is focused in the direct support of the classroom. And I will stand for questions tonight.
We'll start with Stan.
Thank you, Mike. Susan, just, I want to make sure to clarify for the public. So basically, our total budget is $739 million. A third of that is unrestricted, which is about $264, and then of that $264, we invest about 70% of that into salaries?
Well, of the entire $739 million, we invest--
Okay, that's right, because some of the salaries would be--
Yes, are in the restricted funds as well.
Okay. Do you have a--
He was asking if the salary figure, the 73%, was only in the unrestricted funds, and no, we have salaries that live in restricted funds as well. So nutrition services would have salaries, special ed has salaries, the major, well, all the funds have salaries.
Have we historically been at about 70% for salaries?
Yes, yes. At least during my tenure, I guess I can't go back, you know, too many years before my presence in the district, but during the last 10 years, we've been running in that 70 to 75% range.
Okay. And then on your, and then my last question is about the fixed costs. You mentioned, under transportation, you have a number of $700,000. And I believe maybe there's still a workshop to come up on transportation, but since we, isn't this the year we're going to negotiate? How are we already associating the increase?
So fiscal year '20 is the last year under our current contract. So that, we already have an increase in that contract, it's 3%. So we know that the current, what we're spending now is going to go up 3%, that's a given. What we would anticipate, based on what we know, and we've been told by various transportation vendors, because obviously, we've started looking at what happens next, is that we are probably under-market by a fairly, fairly healthy amount. We don't have specifics yet, but I am anticipating that that fixed cost related to transportation is going to have to bump up a bit. I don't know exactly how much. We're going to find that out in the next few months as we start to work through what happens next.
And again, I apologize, what's, just for clarification for the public, the number under high-needs enrollment, what is that again?
So what we're looking at related to high-needs enrollment, and this happens to us really every year, there are certain needs related to, and special ed's a good example. Special ed is very dependent on student needs. So if a student's IP calls for certain services, we have to meet those services. So as we are looking at needs related to our special ed population, we might need 10 more paras or three more teachers or whatever it is that we need. We have to provide that regardless of the budget. So there are certain expenditures similar to fixed costs, we have to cover because we have to provide those services. So special ed is the perfect example of that, where I have to figure out in the budget how to cover certain high-needs enrollment because we have to cover it. So, right, the students' needs have to be met. So in this case, we're, and the secondary positions, we showed that on the previous slide, I think there were five of them. A lot of that's based on enrollment. I mean, you heard that we have a very large graduating senior class. We've seen, we haven't seen a decline in the secondary level, so those positions, we've been adding because of the numbers. The offset has been somewhat in the elementary areas, elementary teachers, where we just haven't filled some vacancies. We've moved, we've shifted those allocations to the secondary level. That's how we're paying for some of those needs. So this $1.2 million, it's not necessarily going to come off of new money, some of it's coming out of existing budget.
Got it. Thank you.
On fixed costs, I need some help. You know, last year, we gave staff a raise. Does that carry through as a fixed cost to this year?
No.
Now, if we give a raise this year, say we give a raise this year in June, would that be a fixed cost increase for next year because we've got to cover that salary again in the next year?
So, and we're in the IBB process now, so we're working through all of those conversations, and ultimately, kind of money is usually the last thing we talk about. So we will, we're good for fiscal year '19. That's finished, we negotiated that last year, those are built into the budget for fiscal year '19. As we are anticipating what might occur in the next few months, those costs will be built into the fiscal year '20. So a lot of the new money that we're receiving, a good chunk will be focused on wages.
Right. Wouldn't that be a fixed cost increase?
Well, it's not a fixed cost. Once it's built into the budget, it's there, so it--
So you're pre-building it into the budget because you know you've got to spend--
Because I know I'm going to have to cover it. So I'm, I will, I don't want to say pre-build it because I don't know yet what that number's going to be. The board hasn't given us any, you know, specific direction yet, but, you know, I have to cover these fixed, these fixed costs no matter what, because we've got to turn on the lights, and we've got to get the transportation companies paid, and we have to buy the fuel for the buses. There are certain things we have to do and we have to cover, and then there's programs, increases for positions, new positions, and then there's the big number, which is the compensation number. And all of those things have to come out of either budget shifts and/or new money.
Okay. Thank you. Ben?
Yes, I'm particularly excited about the proposal for pre-K expansion, and it's not necessarily for the reason that you're thinking right now. It's actually related to our award from the Wichita Chamber over the years for economic development, because as we know, the sooner kids get into school, the sooner their parents are available to re-enter the workforce if they choose. And I think this is, I know the district has historically provided all-day kindergarten when it was not a requirement, and now it's exciting that we're pressing forward into a further comprehensive package for educating our littlest of littles. So, thank you.
Well, and I want to point out, the other thing about expanding the preschool is we are finding out more and more as research about the earlier that children get some kinds of education, the better they do, and this just seems so beautifully to fit with our Avid program, that granted, our Avid starts quite a bit later, but nonetheless, getting kids into the preschool program, and there are, as we've, what's our statistic? Isn't it about 75% of our students are in free or reduced lunch? I believe that's our stats. And if that's so, just think about all of those little brothers and sisters at home that we can begin to give a boost up by giving them some preschool experience. With three-quarters of all of our students being in a situation that they could be called at-risk, we certainly have a lot of little ones at home that would be in that if we don't help them out with the preschool. That's all.
You know, I hate to be the negative one, but I've been on this board so long that I guess I'm just entrenched in negativity, and I apologize for that upfront. I guess I'm just entrenched in negativity and I apologize for that upfront. But, you know, we're talking about a hundred, a hundred and fifty million dollars in building...